Okay, we are going to bring this Select Board meeting to order at 5:32 PM, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, in the room with us, we have Wanda Corcel, Fred Bagley, and Justin Lindholm, and Sheriff Ryder Paskovich. Do we have any items to add or delete to the agenda?
I don't think so.
So, the only thing that we are going to table is the cybersecurity-related policy. That will be on a future agenda, but it's not prepared for this evening. But the other two policies, the small credits policy and the tax collection policy, will be, is still on the agenda.
Okay.
So you can just make a motion to approve the agenda with the tabling of cybersecurity.
Okay.
I'll move to amend the agenda to reflect the tabling of the elimination of small amounts in cybersecurity-related policies.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, administrative matters. I will move to approve the signing of the orders, or motion to approve the payroll for 91525 for $14,169.66, and orders for 92225 for the amount of $54,292.78.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sarah, can you just, on that, make sure Joy... So we have one that we signed tonight that says 10,15809, which is different than the 14,169.66. Looks like it's payroll. So there, we've verbally approved if it was supposed to be the 14,169, but the one that you have for us to sign is 10,158. So if we need to go back and sign something next time, happy to do that.
What is, the one you're signing, what is the date on it?
It's for the period ending 9, it's 91625.
Okay.
91625.
Yep.
And that was for 10,15809?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want also to make a motion, to move to approve that amount, just in case this was the correct amount? And then we can board the previous one if needed?
Yeah, or you could amend the motion to approve payroll for 916 in the amount of 10,15809, whichever amount is correct.
Okay, so I will make a motion to approve payroll in the amount of 10,15809, for whichever one is correct.
Yep, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
Thanks for noticing that.
Thank you. Oh, I'll move then to approve the minutes for 9825.
You just went on mute, I don't know why. The town of Mendon is on mute and your camera shut off. Stay tuned. Online, we cannot hear the meeting.
And then, can you hear us now?
I can hear you now.
Okay, and then with camera, see if you turn it, bring it up again, and then just choose the laptop. So integrated camera.
Excellent.
Can you see us yet?
I cannot see you yet, but I can hear you.
Okay.
So that's a plus.
Okay.
Yep.
So when the sound cut out, you were in the middle of making a motion to approve the minutes of 98 and 916.
Let's go for that again.
Sure, so I'll move to approve the minutes for September 8th and September 16th.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving forward to announcements. Does anybody have any announcements?
Do we have any announcements, Sarah?
No, maybe just a reminder that if you haven't signed up for textmig.gov, that is the best way to get the most up-to-date information from the town, is to receive a text from them. And there's directions on our website in order to sign up for it.
Great.
Okay.
So we'll keep trying to make the camera work, but for now, we'll just keep going with audio.
Okay.
Okay, now we'll move forward to public comment. Anybody have a comment? Can't see if anybody's hands are raised online here. You see anything, Sarah?
I do not.
Okay. Okay, moving forward to business. Item A, Town Office Facility Use Agreement. Sarah, do you want to go ahead and talk about this, or?
Yeah, so the Democratic Caucus has requested to hold their caucus at the town office. And they are requesting that we waive the fees for use of the building and payment for the Rutland County Sheriff to be present. Previously, one of the board members had asked what the rate is for the Rutland County Sheriff, and that is $56.43 per hour.
Okay. Is this sheriff scheduled to be there already?
I believe that it is on the calendar, yeah.
Okay, because we're not waiving that they have to have the sheriff, right?
No, we're not waiving that they have to have the sheriff. It's who pays for it. So typically, when it's a Mendon-appointed committee, that you would allow use of the building without cost. The Democratic Party and the Republican Party have utilized the building in the past. Both are volunteer organizations, so you would want to make the same rules for both parties.
Right, or any, or any major organized party in the state. So if the Progressive Party wanted to...
Absolutely, yeah. Yep, I don't want to, I don't want to limit it to just two parties, but any political party. Otherwise, you know, sometimes they have a difficulty getting funds in order to hold a meeting.
Yep. Has the Republican Party tried to organize a caucus yet?
I believe, I believe so, yes.
Okay, they've tried to organize, they haven't scheduled it yet.
They have not submitted a facility use agreement with Mendon, so I don't know if they intend to use our building or not. They have questioned and have been provided the facility use agreement.
Okay.
So I believe both parties, Democratic and Republican, are both looking to...
So my, my thinking on this, I didn't realize we waived it for other groups.
Well, we only waive it for Mendon groups, like the Planning Commission, the ZBA, the Select Board.
Organized for your town government.
Organized for town government, yeah.
Okay.
Now, the Democratic and Republican Parties, or any political party, would be presenting JPs to the ballot.
Yeah.
But that is not this year, so that's not the purpose of this particular caucus or on either party. But in the future, they, they would be presenting a list of JPs for the ballot that do serve the town of Mendon on the Board of Civil Authority.
The, I have a little bit of experience with these. I just, Seth, if you want to know a little bit about this. So there's a statutory requirement that if you are going to be organized as a political party at the town level, you have to do it within a timeframe, and there are certain requirements. And one of the other purposes that holds is, like, when legislative seat is vacated, the governor will often ask whichever party the incumbent had, they'll ask that group to submit names. And so you kind of have to, like, already be organized. It's like if Jim Harrison resigned, the governor might ask the Mendon Republicans and the Chittenden Republicans to get together and submit three names. And it's, it's like, if you're already organized and you know who those members are, and it's not like, okay, now just all your buddies get to come forward and do it.
Right, right.
I feel a little, I don't know, I could, if we were to do this, I would say we should do it for all major parties and not just the Democratic Party, so that if the others wanted to organize, that we would waive it up to a, like, a maximum of two hours.
Right.
Or we don't do it at all, and, you know, we might contribute to our local groups if you feel strongly to cover the cost of that.
Right.
So I don't know how you, if you feel, I definitely think it's either everybody...
Yeah, I agree with that.
Or, or nothing.
What? Okay.
I'm a little inclined to, to deny it, only because it is $56 times two. What's the other fee that they have to pay? It's the, it's the facility use fee?
Yeah, and that is often waived, because that, that just covers incidental supplies. But if they use any incidental supplies, it's in the agreement, they're supposed to reimburse us for it.
Oh, okay. Okay. I'm kind of of the mind that we waive the use fee, but not the sheriff fee. But Seth, if you feel differently, I'd be persuaded. I mean, I, I also feel comfortable donating to causes I care about to cover the cost.
Right. No, I agree with you on that. I think that's probably...
I just kind of see a slippery slope.
Right, that's what I...
I mean, if we care enough to need to have a sheriff and feel it's in the public's interest. I don't think, I think it's, when it's government, then it's everybody's interest. But if it's a private organization, I don't know how taxpayers would feel about a political party getting taxpayer funds. I just feel a little, I know, I know it's waiving, but we're still paying for it.
Right.
I agree with, with waiving the facility.
Facility fee.
Yeah. But with the sheriff, I agree with you on that.
So if you, if we agree, do, one of us should probably move to waive the facility fee? And I would, I would say that should any of the major parties wish to organize this, you know, in the year 2025 under the same provision that we, like, our motion should be for the Vermont Democratic Caucus, the local caucus, only like the local caucus, and any other major party. That way, if it, if it comes to you, Sarah, in the next week or so, you know, you can do that. How do you feel about that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you, so do you want me to make that motion, Sarah?
Yep, that would be great.
Okay, so I move that we approve waiving the building, the facility fee for the local, for use of the local Democratic Caucus for their organizing committee in the year 2025, and prospectively authorize waiving the same fee for any other major party that wishes to organize locally in 2025.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So this, I don't think we have to sign this, right? We don't have to sign this?
That's approved by Jessie as the town clerk.
Okay, oh yeah, I see.
You're just in charge of the fees.
Okay.
Okay, well, we'll leave that for her.
All right.
Okay. Well, and item E, Route 4 Safety, Speed Limit Reduction. So we have some good news. Somebody want to talk about that?
Do you want me to recap?
If you want to.
I'll, I'll give the high level. I'll give the high level, but I think, so the, the high level is that Fred and Jennifer were, attended the meeting on September, what day was it? 10, in person, and Sarah was there virtually. And they represented us extremely well in front of the, the commission, and were complimented many times during the meeting on the prepared, their preparedness, and the packet and the information that they had brought before the commission. The Secretary Flynn noted, as did the other two commissioners of public safety and DMV, noted that, and commended Mendon for doing our homework and doing our part before coming to the commission, and including things like approving the side, the speed limit signs that are forthcoming, working on planning with a local commission. I'm going to hand this over to both Sarah and Fred to fill in the gaps, so just a second. But taking the time over the years to, and the funds, the resources, to work with the Rutland County Sheriffs and other law enforcement to bear the burden of enforcing the speed limit. And so with that, and probably based on other reasons that you both remember more than I, or that we took note of, they did approve the lowering of the speed limit from basically, from, in Rutland Town, from the town, the limit, with Rutland Town, but, but also from Home Depot, to Rutland Town and Mendon, and then Mendon all the way up to where it currently moves back up to 50, right, by Sugar and Spice. So now it will be 40 coming out of the plaza. And in addition to their formal action, they took note of some of the other inconsistencies in the traffic pattern, including the merger lanes, as you, which flip-flop as you go up the hill, and directed staff to continue working at the state level and then locally to examine whether there are better ways to line and, and direct traffic, you know, up through town. So I don't think it's the end of the conversation, but they voted unanimously to lower it. So that's my report out, and then I would hand it back to Sarah, and then Fred's also here in the room, Sarah, as well.
Yeah, I also wanted to just thank Fred for all of his preparedness and pushing not only the Select Board, but all the way through to the, to the Traffic Committee. You know, when the traffic engineers presented their speed study, it was not looking in Mendon's favor. They did a very, even though they followed their rules, they were only in Mendon for a very short period of time. And we had data of speeding through Mendon or unsafe driving conditions for, you know, a few decades. The amount that we need to thank the taxpayers for their support of our law enforcement and public safety budgets that have been approved to install the speed limit signs to participate in the scoping study, the Route 4 scoping study that we did with their Regional Planning Commission. And they also deserve our kudos, along with the engineer Jen from BHB that conducted that scoping study. All of these little pieces and parts of collecting data, the volunteers of Mendon that participated in the community visit that set Route 4, reimagined Route 4 and Route 4 Safety as their, one of their priorities, that all of this was evidence that Mendon is doing their part in order to try to increase safety of Route 4. And it seemed like the Traffic Committee heard, heard that message loud and clear. So again, thank you for, to Fred for pushing this along. And, you know, everybody that's been involved over the years, from our special officers to the Rutland County Sheriff, our constables, and the various members of the Select Board, it was a long time coming, it was a lot of work. And so I'm thrilled that it was successful to at least lower the speed limit down to 40.
Yeah, absolutely. Agreed, thank you, Fred. Go ahead.
It was, it was a fun experience. It did look a little iffy for a while, because they actually had to procedurally take a vote on what the town's joint requests were. And the town's joint request pledged to lower to 35 or 40, so they had to procedurally vote up or down on that, and they turned that down unanimously, and we were concerned. But then they promptly put forward another motion that had been reduced to 40. So they had to, they had to actually consult with their in-house lawyer, who was sitting at the table to make sure they were following the proper sequence. So they voted down the request, but then added the subsequent request. And it was also pretty clear, as Sarah alluded to then, the Secretary of the Agency turned to the engineers and said, "You, you will the work with the town on these other issues."
Yeah, that's great.
So we are currently on a painting schedule for 2029. The engineers will start looking at it hopefully last week, and start thinking about striking lane width, access management, town intersection, town road intersections, and so forth. It's unclear when the 40 miles will go up. It's, it takes some time for them to replace 145s. I'm kind of hoping, I don't know, if we didn't ask them, I'm kind of hoping they'll put up one of those big yellow temporary signs saying "New speed limit ahead", because for 40 years, it's been 45. And without cutting into riders' business too much, we want to be fair to motorists who are used to seeing 45. So I think this is, it was an important first step. Couple of questions I have going forward. I'd kind of like to, with the board's permission, put together and help to all the businesses in which I'm town stationary. Thanking them for signing the petition, I think that helped. So if it's agreeable to do, I'd like to just put together a thank you note for participating, and it's going to happen, so forth.
Yeah, I think, I would say yes on that.
And just pass it around, go put it doors and...
Yeah.
All the people that's...
Yeah, I think Megan, Megan likes to be the point of, you know, run by her, language or whatever.
And we also, we enlisted the Marshall Principal. He sent in an email about this, the bus stopping in town and the problems that the kids have. I think that caught Secretary Flynn's attention. He said, "Ooh, my granddaddy's bus issues," you know, so it's her personal matter. So I'll put together just a note and send it to Megan, and, and then give it to the businesses.
Yep.
And, and I think the businesses who overwhelmingly signed the petition, a few we couldn't reach because they're out of town owners and the local managers just, or whatever, didn't feel comfortable signing on behalf of the owner, whoever. But as you know, for both the Menon and the Move project, as well as in the BHB's scoping project, there was recommendation that Menon consider enhancing the visibility of our town district, our village district, and the village center with banners or a kiosk or something. I'm not quite sure how or who would proceed with that, but I would think the finer that this areas would be the businesses. And since the businesses will hopefully be grateful right now that it's going to be 40 outside their door instead of 45, maybe that'll pique their interest in participating in the town in some sort of joint banners on flag poles or a better kiosk or some, something to more identify the town. And I have no clue how to do that next time.
Okay.
Something for this, like, work if you want.
To start to think about, yeah.
And then, yeah, the next thing is, what would be an appropriate timing to submit the request to E-Trans for the speed feedback devices? On paper, we don't qualify even at 40. On paper, it has to be 35. But a lot of regional planning thinks we have a very strong case of getting it at 40, because we made the case so, so well. To get it from 45, 40, they're making the case to say, okay, now let people know it's 40 with the visible signs, which is part of the whole package. I mean, so, but when to submit that? It goes to a different E-Trans department. It's not the engineering people, it's not the speed study people, it's not the district three people. It goes to a different department out there.
Yeah.
But I'm, I'm kind of thinking maybe return to, again, to regional planning and say, how long do we let the dust settle and the news ripply through the system before? It's too late to install them this year anyway.
Okay.
So, but I'm, I'm just kind of thinking, never I've done it, that sometime over the winter or so, in the fall, we put the request in. I think it's, kind of, if we wait too long, then the dust might settle too much, and they might forget the presentation and the recent decision. If you do it too soon, they think they're gaining up on the, you know...
Urging, so I would say, we, we also got, just to let you know, Seth and I were just looking at this, we have this letter from the Ian Degudis?
Ian Degudis, yeah.
The Traffic Operations Engineer. And what it has is this, the formal certificate from the state changing the speed limit, signed on September 10th. And it marks the mile marker. So this is supposed to be recorded in the town records. What I don't know, Sarah, and I know you may have been doing a little bit of research on this and talking with Ryder, is I suspect that the legal, that there's something, and we, by the way, feel free to reach out to the, the town attorney to see if you can suss out when the effective date is of this is and when the signs are going to be erected, and then maybe work with Ryder on enforceability in the meantime. So my thinking to answer your, to kind of get a lot, get to your question, Fred, is that maybe if we take this certificate and we have the answer about if there's anything that can be enforced by virtue of this, you know, very formal certificate, and the placement of the signs, great. In the meantime, I know that Ryder has flagged that we need to make, potentially make amendments to the traffic ordinance. And so if we need to do that, perhaps the lawyer can just give the whole ordinance a look over and then also, and let us know if there's any, or VLCT, you know, and can give us any updates in addition to the actual change. And we'll do that as fast as we can if it's, if it's the case that this official certificate has no legal meaning other than to record that the state agrees with it.
So, and I did receive some information from our constable on that, too, Lee Me. There are different ways that the sheriff can write tickets under a municipal code versus the state code. So the state code would probably be enforceable as soon as the, as soon as the signs are posted and that certificate is recorded and whatnot, and we'll make sure that we, make sure that we have all of the steps followed for that. The municipal code would not be able to be written under until we updated that traffic ordinance. They keep that on file, and we file it with the Judicial Bureau. The difference between the two is we receive, as the town, we receive additional fee funding from writing it under one code. we receive additional fee funding from writing it under one code or the other.
Okay. So if you mind following up and, right, obviously Ryder's in the room, I know you can't see him. But, um, if you don't mind following up, just to make sure that the sheriffs are comfortable with the timeline and then, I know, I would be, I would welcome seeing this on an agenda as an ordinance item as soon as the staff can pull it together.
Yes, because then after adoption, it's going to be 60 days for, um, for effective date.
Do, um, I'll also just make a copy of this certificate and give it to Ryder before we leave tonight?
Yeah.
Right? Okay. Then you can see what we're talking about and see if anyone has anything.
Any input from working in other towns?
I think, um, Sarah has a good relationship with the people down at the bottom of the hill, the local District 3 office.
Yeah.
Uh, and can at some point discreetly acquire when the signs might go up.
Yeah.
You know, will it be tomorrow? Will it be some, do they all go up once a month or whatever? So that, so that law enforcement knows. Um, with your permission, I would go back to regional planning and traffic people.
Yeah.
And say, "So what would be the appropriate timing to put in the radar speed request? We probably wouldn't install it until next spring."
Spring, yeah.
By the time you investigate them, you know, get a, learn how to analyze that this is going to take about a year.
Yeah.
But I, I originally thought that maybe the question going into the winter time. I'm kind of thinking it should go on with everybody at the E-Trans, at the state level, says something's happening in Mendon, um, and, and maybe get on board. Or, or at least we know if they're not on board sooner rather than later.
Yeah. I.
So.
If you feel like you need permission, I don't think you need formal permission, but I, I think that going and having that conversation is.
And then the, the final thing, that's, it's way too far off, is that I just want to point out that, I have to say this a little carefully, but Mendon's efforts and Mendon's scoping study kind of pulled around town a little on this. And even though their strike board represented, communicated a very timely comment at a very important time in the process, the deliberative processes going on a lot earlier, it was very helpful when he spoke, what he spoke.
Yes.
Um, but they've not got a scoping study. Um, you know, they have not invested like, like we have, so.
Yeah.
Um, we, we can't tell them to do a scoping study, but what they do on their side of Town Line Road, well, what the state does on the town's side of Combine Road is going to have some impact on our side. So we, we may have further conversations, I'm guessing with the town.
Yeah.
About what are your concerns on your, your app?
Yeah.
Actually, we may, we may be a, a model because I had a, I met the, the, um, the chair of the select board, um, now her name is escaping, right? Her name is right there. Um, in a different context last night. Uh, no, um, she works for the Vermont Bar Association. Um, do you know who the chair is of Rutland County?
I don't, right off the top of my head.
I was thinking of her real quick. Anyway, I said, it was just a day, you know, a day or two after this had happened, I, I thanked, you know, just, uh, by the way, thank you at your town for your support and it worked out well. And she was a little, um, impressed and surprised. And she said, "Well, we tried this before and it hasn't worked." Oh, Mary Ashcroft.
Oh, yeah, Mary.
Yeah, and she said, "We tried this before and it didn't work." And I said, "Well, our town put a lot of effort into this." So maybe you could, you know, we could share with you why we think it was successful and maybe that would be something they can learn from.
I have, I did get a question at the meeting. And a couple of people asked when the news has prickly it out, whether we intended to work with the town of Killington? And I personally, my answer at the meeting was no. And my feelings, frankly, still are no because it was five and a half miles, 50 miles an hour before we could turn and pass.
Yeah.
And Killington's problem seemed to me so distant from our issues, so.
Yeah.
That, that was considering, I was speaking on behalf of the town, but I personally didn't see much reason to work with that neighborhood.
Yeah.
But for all the time, yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
It'll be a fun process.
If, if it's all, at all possible, it makes sense to me if we can help them, the folks who put up the signs, just to think about the upcoming ski season and how, um, people, we're all creatures of habit and maybe having the signs up, you know, before snow flies would give at least locals a chance to acclimate, you know, some regional folks to acclimate a little bit and maybe lessen the, the, the shock of a change right at a time when people are.
Yeah, and I don't know, maybe Sarah does, it's been so long since it, there was a speed zone change, speed limits change, whether a press release goes out from E-Trans, I don't know about that.
Okay.
I don't think it needs to be published, but.
When we can confirm that it's, um, posted on our social media and this would be, um, a reason to use the TextMyGov.
Yeah.
Yeah, TextMyGov, the new app to tell everybody.
Okay.
Thank you again.
Yes, thank you again. Great work. Great job.
So, Select Board, I just wanted to let you know that Carol Gates has raised her hand to speak.
Okay.
Online.
Okay.
Is her at this time?
Yeah, we recognize Carol. Go ahead, Carol. You'll have to unmute yourself. Carol, can you hear us?
Thank you. Um, I just had a question, um, that, um, Ms. Buxton referenced that for Ms. Tully to contact the town attorney, did you decide on a town attorney?
Yes, the Select Board authorized me to enter into letters of engagement with three firms. And we have a, an agreement with one, um, SPC, uh, Sitzel Page, it used to be Stichel, uh, Stichel, Stitzel, Letser and Page, SBF. And then, um, the other two firms, one was, um, Facy Goss and Mchee. And the third was, I think, Carol Bowie and Cullen out of Middlebury. So once those letters are all signed, then the staff will be authorized or we will be authorized to speak with those, um, attorneys as needed and get, uh, get counsel. So those are the three. I'll, I'll let, um, I know that SBF has been signed, that was just signed on Friday, but I'll report back to the Select Board at our next meeting to confirm when the other two agreements have been signed.
Okay, great. Thank you. Answer my question.
Okay. Um, so everybody's all set there and moving forward, uh, to item C, uh, policy adoption. So we've tabled the cybersecurity. Um, we are, uh, Sarah, do you want to speak about this with the small?
Uh, yeah, these are requests from Jessie, our, um, town treasurer. She's just creating policies that are recommended by the Secretary of State, Treasurer's Office and, um, VLCT. She recently went to a training and, um, these two policies were recommended. Um, you have copies of them in the orders. The small credits policy would actually, um, govern, um, the procedure for returning, um, the small credits to taxpayers. And the tax collection policy, elimination of small amounts. That is if somebody paid their taxes and they shortchanged the town by, you know, a dollar, that we wouldn't spend resources trying to collect on a dollar. Um, the threshold though is in the policy, which is in front of you guys. If you guys could look at that one, just to know what that threshold is. Um, the small credits policy would either go against next year's taxes or be returned based on the regulations in that policy.
So for the, the benefit of the public, I'll just recap what these two things are. They seem very sensible to me. The first is, um, if you have an amount of, if you say you underpay your taxes by, um, a dollar or less, then it's automatically, uh, abated before adding interest or penalty. And for total amounts due of $5 or less, you know, if it's greater than $1 but up to $5, we send a letter saying, you know, "You owe us this amount," you know, $3.93 or whatever it is. And if it's not paid at the time, um, the next interest calculation is done, then, um, we abate that amount before adding interest. So it's basically not chasing down very small amounts and spending more time than it's worth for that. And then for tax collection, basically if you have a credit of $50, um, it will automatically be put toward the next year's tax bill. If it's greater than 50 bucks, then a letter will be sent saying that it's going to be applied to the next year of tax bill unless, um, the, the person requests a refund by check. So.
Okay.
I think those are pretty sensible and save staff time and resources.
Okay.
So, um. Yeah, sure. So I'll move to approve the tax collection policy, elimination of small amounts due and the tax collection policy of small credits.
And I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next item is, uh, fiscal year '27 budget timeline, um, and Sarah, you have something you wanted to?
Yeah, Sarah, did you have anything on that? And if not, I just have one question that you might answer.
No, I'm here to answer your questions.
I haven't gone through the full budget timeline before, so just high level. Um, I do remember in December, we were approving warnings and budgets moving into, you know, the preliminary ones, we were discussing those, and then they were approved in January. What are some of the other things that are going to come up, um, September and October? I, I know, um, Wanda's here and she had mentioned, and we said we put on a future agenda, talking about, um, the timeline and the policy around, um, petitioning for local groups to have amounts. What's the general timeline was my overall question.
The, yeah, so, um, the budget timeline, um, as far as debating, um, with requests of department heads and the select board making decisions, we like to have 99% of the budget done by the end of the year. So usually in December, we have two meetings, sometimes a third meeting to just finalize, um, the agenda or the, uh, budget before going into the holidays. Um, the only changes that are made in January is if, for example, we don't receive the amount for Rutland County tax or, um, an organization that we aren't allowed to say no to. Um, so there are very few changes being made in January. The, um, the budget technically formally has to be, um, approved by the deadline of signing the warning, which would have the budget amounts in it. Um, and that's usually the last week of January. Um, appropriation requests, there is a statutory deadline of the beginning of January to submit the petitions. Um, Wanda had asked for us to reconsider requiring the petition for, uh, those organizations that were funded in the previous year that, um, has not asked for an increase. Um, I didn't put it on this agenda because, um, Megan wasn't going to be here. And, um, so it will be on the next agenda, but if there's anything, any further information that you need about that, um, policy or the options that the town has in handling appropriations, um, I can definitely give you an outline of that before the next meeting.
That answers my question.
Okay.
You're an old hat, you've been at this for a while now, Sarah, just how the timeline works.
Yep. Okay. Um, so, item E is employment evaluation. Sarah, you.
Yeah. So it says on the agenda that we need to, we could go into executive session, but I don't think we need to. Um, on September 16th, we, a special meeting, we increased the hourly rate of the Mendon Road Commissioner by $3.66 per hour. Um, that was an error. And, um, so what I would like to do is to void the motion, uh, the action that we took on September 16th to increase the hourly rate of the Mendon Road Commissioner by $3.66 per hour. And instead, um, move that we increase the hourly rate of the Mendon Road Commissioner by $2.63 per hour, which is the amount that we should have, um, cited. And so it's a one motion with two parts. One is to void what we did before and then to remove, you know, move this corrected amount.
Okay, I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that concludes our meeting.
And that concludes our meeting. I will move to adjourn our Select Board meeting at 6:18 PM.
Awesome. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.